Reconvene to Wycomico County Council. First item on the agenda is discussion with the county attorney and reference outside legal counsel. Good evening, Mr. Wilber. How are you?
Good evening. Paul Wilber, county attorney.
I think council members had some questions in regard to this matter. I think it's similar questions we've probably reviewed with you before.
I think we touched on this one year or two ago, yes.
I mean, I guess the question is if we're hiring outside legal counsel, should there be, I mean, the charter seems to say that can be done with council, county council consent. Is that, is that your position?
Right. What I thought, just to perhaps introduce the discussion, let's talk about the charter provision that was put in back in 2006.
Yeah.
In the legal department section, it has a paragraph, "Special counsel," one sentence says, "The county executive may, with the approval of the council, employ special legal counsel to work problems of an extraordinary nature when the work to be done is of such character or magnitude as to require services in addition to those regularly provided by the Department of Law." That's the sentence that's in the legal department section. From our checking, historically, what I think, we'll say, other counsel or special counsel have primarily been in four areas over, since 2006 forward. One is bond counsel, another is pension counsel advising about the pension plan, another was in negotiating FOP contract, and then in the employment law area, the law department, whether it was Mr. Baker or us, there's been, obviously, we do a lot of work with employment law, but when we see a situation which looks like it's going to be a claim that will be covered either administratively or in court, in some employment law matters, you can see that coming almost immediately. We always contact Legit, say, "This is what we have," and they will tend to assign an attorney to it. The cost of that attorney is then adjusted to the deductible that the county has to pay for any type of claim. So that's, that's the way historically other counsel has come in. Again, we have looked, we do not see where resolutions have been done in the past for those types of things, that there's, I think, been monies budgeted for bond counsel, pension counsel, FOP representation on the contract. So there's been approved budget monies, but no specific resolutions. I think that's the, the history of this, I'll say, we know what the section says and we see how it's been implemented since 2006, which...
I believe on the FOP, we did approve.
Did you?
I believe on the FOP, we didn't approve.
Okay.
I mean, have to go back and check.
Yeah.
If I remember the discussion was...
I'm not saying our search was comprehensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just because history says that they didn't do it in the past doesn't make that right.
So I think with that background, the question is how to go forward.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, money's being taken from Human Resources Department to pay a law firm. I mean, what, you know, without counsel approval, is that, how does that work? You know, money's paid out of the Human Resources Department.
Right.
From operating expenditures to hire a lawyer without counsel approval.
Those, I think, are generally for personnel matters.
All right.
I think those matters generally fall into what I described as legit coordinated matters.
So they should have gotten counsel approval under the charter?
I guess the question there would be, is that, is that where we are, so that we need, we haven't done that in the past.
All right. Is that what the charter says to do?
It says extraordinary nature, problems of an extraordinary nature. So...
What was the problem that was extraordinary?
Probably personnel matter.
Yeah, but, but again, it's...
In both cases that we're looking at.
You know, extraordinary nature, services in addition to those provided by the Department of Law. So if you're not doing, you know, you're, you're the Department of Law, so if you're not doing it, that seems like the extraordinary nature that requires counsel approval. That seems to be the plain reading of that provision.
Well, I think where we are is, given the history...
Yeah, I understand.
And, you know, some of these matters, some have lead time to them, like, say, pension, legal opinions about a pension issue, that would have lead time, bond counsel, that would have lead time. Some personnel matters need attorney attention quickly.
Yeah.
But who, who is to determine that? I mean, I understand, in most of the circumstances that you were referencing before, that was, those are pretty much large issues that even if the council hadn't approved, the council was aware of it, probably initiatives taken on the, on the, by the administrative branch, whether it was the current administration or the prior administration, and we can recognize that. I think where it's beginning to get out of control is when the council finds out after the fact that department heads are now hiring attorneys. Then, and, you know, at that stage, I think, you know, we're losing, we're losing some type of structure in this county, is just how we are expending our funds, especially when I think the true intent of the charter is to try to put some, some particular regulations on how those funds are going to be spent.
Department heads are hiring outside attorneys?
From what I understand, this was, was this initiated through a department head?
Well, we don't know. We've not got any answers.
We don't know.
So it says, "Human Resources Department, operating expenses," so, I mean, I don't know, unless someone wants to answer that.
Yeah.
I mean, again, we, we're kept in the dark over what seems to be a very clear violation of the charter and can get no answers because, you know, we get a response that it's, you know, you know, there's, you know, citing sections of the charter. I mean, you know, I believe you've seen the letter dated March 29th. Do you agree with that legal analysis in that March 29th letter about why this charter provision's inoperable?
I think that March 29th letter is not a direct answer to the question that was asked.
Okay, all right.
Not at all.
So...
Thank you.
So I guess the question is, should this sort of thing have counsel approval going forward, in your opinion? No matter, past is the past, we can't control that, but going forward?
In a perfect world...
Okay.
Perfect world, here's my hesitancy. If we go through a resolution process on a matter that needs immediate attorney attention, I think there's going to be a timing issue. I think this is ideally something that there would be communication between the executive and the council about.
I agree.
Communication is the key.
Yeah, so...
It's key to everything.
So, but, I mean, in theory, we could have a resolution that would say, "If immediate personnel matters are done, engage the law firm X for X amount of dollars, you know, if there's an immediate need." You know, we can pass a resolution that does those contingencies, and I think that's what was offered last August. So, you know, I mean, I mean, there could be a, a resolution that kind of preauthorizes those sort of emergency situations that, that you mentioned. Is that right? We, I mean...
Well, I think Mr. Wilber's point is, I mean, tomorrow...
Yeah.
Something happens tomorrow, then immediately something needs to be addressed. It might be, you know, a serious personnel matter or something, but we don't meet for two more weeks. So I guess the question becomes, you know, what happens? You know, you know, if we need that help tomorrow or sometime during that, during that interim, this, you know...
Well, there are always going to be exceptions. I mean, we meet almost every two weeks. I, I don't know how there's any emergencies that, that could be established over the last few years where you could tell me, or tell any of us, that this had to have been done right away and, you know, there was no time to address this with the county council. I don't really buy that. I don't think there's been any emergency that would warrant that. I mean, the, the exceptions, I think, would be for, you know, catastrophic events.
Well, well...
I think, and some of the personnel matters have been quick trigger.
But what's, what we're looking at now, though, is that what is supposed to be maybe defined as an exception to the rule is now becoming the rule.
Well, and, but to Bill's point, you know, I mean, we can authorize the use of this law firm, you know, any sort of law firm, any sort of emergency, I mean, by resolution, you could, we could do that, you know, by, by county consent ahead of time and say, if there are exceptions, and then be told about that afterwards, because right now, what we have is this happening, and then it being said, oh, this is, you know, being shielded from any sort of public view or, or council view by the idea this is, you know, some sort of personnel matter. It wasn't even said it was an emergency, it was just, you know, shielded for personnel matter, which can mean, you know, that, you know, we don't know if that's true or not. We have no, we have no way to know, you know, to check, you know, whether it was an actual emergency or not. I mean, that gives carte blanche, you know, carte blanche to, to do whatever. So we can't, you know, and the, the charter says counsel approval. I mean, unless we want to, we can, you know, if there's a charter amendment we want to offer to say, "Accept in extraordinary circumstances," that's fine. We've passed charter amendments, you know, before the voters before, but if the charter says that we, that it needs to have counsel approval, then it needs to have counsel approval. So I, I don't, I don't see, I'm not, I don't see that there's an extraordinary situation, exception in the charter for that. I mean, do you disagree with that, Mr. Wilber?
Well, what I will say is, in terms of bringing a resolution forward, that would come from the executive to the council.
That'd be great. Let's wait, shoot, play, yeah.
And so I will certainly discuss that with the executive.
If the executive's here, if he'd like to discuss it.
Do you all want to move to truth, or do you want to just go ahead and make accusations?
You're here. We're, we're welcome to speak.
I'll be glad to hear what's going on. First of all, you've got a copy of two bills, okay? One of them's 3,000, one of them's 2,000 or something, I'm not sure if I got it right. One of them is still very much an ongoing situation where we're being charged.
Executive, yeah, can you speak into that?
One of them is still very much an ongoing situation with a personnel problem that we're being charged daily, we're going to end up in court with, okay? We're being litigated against. The other one was when, when you all passed the bill for the deputy directors to become appointed and approved, we differed on the fact that they became at-will. That is when I called Mr. Karpinski. Now, Mr. Karpinski charges probably close to 300 to 500 hours an hour, so you don't have a whole lot of hours in here. So we're still disagreeing on the fact of the, of the way the bill was written or the way the amendment was written. You all came back then and made the deputy directors merited again. Am I correct? You all made that first thing. That was why Mr. Karpinski was even called in the first place, because that left the deputy directors in a position where they may end up suing the county, and that's what he said, because it was not part of their contract. Only, only ones that were going to be at-will were going to be the department heads.
Let me ask you this.
Mm-hmm.
Under what circumstances did you define that as an emergency where it didn't need counsel approval for that expense?
It was an employee question that came up, okay?
Whether it's employer or not, whether it's personnel matter is not the issue, Bob.
John, emergency says extraordinary. Extraordinary would mean to me where something happened and we're being sued all of a sudden or, or something like that. This is a normal employment operation that we go through every day here.
Well, it could have been, it could have been something that could have been addressed with the council, even in closed session, if you're concerned about the personnel issue.
We asked you to do closed session, you said no. We also talked several times about the fact that we thought that that...
You asked us to do a closed session on what?
On the amendments and all that part of that was being done.
Not to my knowledge.
I don't remember.
Okay, I don't set your schedule, you set the agenda.
Not to my, not to my knowledge, Bob.
So my point was, is that I needed to tell you all that that's how Mr. Karpinski looked at it.
So if we don't do a closed session, then you will violate the charter anyway?
I didn't violate the charter, John. Let's get back, back up, back up just a minute.
Isn't that what we're saying here?
I did not violate the charter. I went out and contacted the employment. There is money in the budget to contact a, a employment attorney. There's money in every budget for the pension, there's money for FOP, there's money for Karpinski.
Right.
It's in the Human Resources Department budget, and that is where I contacted him from there. That's why it was taken out of his, out of their particular thing.
It doesn't make any difference where it came from. The same charter that establishes the budget also establishes the restrictions to how you're supposed to spend those funds.
So what would you call, I don't care what you would call extraordinary then, I'm just saying that that was not extraordinary. That was an employment question we had. So that's where I went to that, with the employee, the employee attorney.
Mr. Wilber, I, I mean, we'd have to ask you, you would ask for clarification, we'd have some clarification. How do you think that could possibly justify an extraordinary circumstance where there wasn't enough time to have approval from the county council on those type of expenditures?
If there's time enough to bring the resolution forward, I think it should be brought forward. But if we have that cir, that circumstance, which is primarily in a personnel area, then I think it, it's hard to get a resolution through in a day or two.
Yeah, but it says that the work done is in extraordinary circumstances in addition to those regularly provided by the Department of Law, and that's what it is. It's not the, the extraordinary nature means that you have to go out and hire an extra, you know, an extra attorney.
Specialist.
Yeah, specialist, but that, that's, that's when this kicks in. The county executive may, with the approval of council, employ legal counsel with, two councils here. The county executive may, with the approval of the county council, employ such legal counsel to work problems of an extraordinary nature when the work is to be done. So it's saying even, even if it's an extraordinary nature, the council, the county council has to approve the legal counsel.
Okay, so let's take this for example, Mark. You all voted on that. You're going to vote two weeks to go ahead and do it. Now, then I have to also put in a request to be able to call Kevin Karpinski or any employment attorney to, to get that money to be able to pay them. So the same night you're voting on it, I'm asking you to give me money to, to contact an employment attorney that would say, "You're wrong" or "You're right." That doesn't make sense.
That's what the charter says.
It's not up to you, it's not up to us. It's the charter, Bob, says that is exactly the rule of law that you're supposed to follow.
And, and...
Whether you like it or not.
But, but, but to Bob's point, if, if, if you think that we are getting into legal trouble and, and, you know, have the county in some legal jeopardy, then it is, it is in our interest to approve, say, "All right, let's, let's get, you know, this special counsel to do that." So I, yeah, I mean, I, I see your point, it doesn't make sense.
Okay, then let's go a little bit step further here, and let's be honest with all this, okay? You are in trouble still, and I found this out from, from the Kevin Karpinski. When you all changed the resolution to make it so that the deputy directors became merited, right? Y'all remember that bill? You crossed out at-will. You crossed out everything to do with department heads. As of April the 1st, all personnel are merited now. There is no at-will employees in Wycomico County.
Well, we're, we're really talking about authority to, you know, to expend funds for attorneys without authorization from the council. That's what this topic is.
This affects, this affects every employee we have, every department head, every deputy director, you know...
I know, but that's not the topic. The topic we're talking about is, is violation of the charter, whereas you're, you're expending funds that aren't authorized.
So you're going to authorize me? Now, now, let's go back to...
Whether you like it or not, that's what the law is.
Okay, all right. Well, then how come, how did you get the money to authorize a forensic auditor several years ago to come in without any approval from the council? It was not a resolution? There was nothing public about that?
We passed a resolution.
Excuse me?
We did pass a resolution on that.
We did.
It was in public?
Yes.
Yeah, we passed it.
That was before you got the money, before you paid it? I'd like to see that, because he was here investigating before you ever passed a resolution.
And I believe that was brought to our attention, and we amended it, and just like we brought...
Well, you, you seem to do things, and then you amend things so that you're covered.
I think what we're trying to do here, Bob, is establish it so it doesn't continue.
I have no problem with that, but I just, you know, I feel like this is something that comes out of HR's budget. Now, we have, we have problems every day with, with different personnel that want to sue Wycomico County and that type of thing. You're going to require that we go, just because you disagree with me on this, you're going to require everything to come before council to be, spend every money.
Mr. Wilber can handle a lot of it, and if Mr. Wilber can't handle it, yes, by charter, it has to, we're not demanding it. The public's demanding it because the public voted on the charter, and the charter is the law we have to follow.
Well, I don't consider employment an extraordinary requirement. I mean, that's day-to-day operations. Extraordinary is, again, when we have to hire a specialist, whether it be a, a medical attorney or something like that for a, for a case where someone has said that they tripped or fell or whatever. That's extraordinary, not day-to-day operations with, with, with our personnel.
Were you saying extraordinary was also required for approval?
Yes, well, and this is for special counsel, for works done, that's done in addition to the Department of Law.
It still, it still needs approval.
So, I mean, and again, the, the employment stuff, if, this sort of stuff you're describing, obviously, we don't need a resolution, I think, for every single incident, but I think it would say for employment problems, you know, you know, up, you know, in the regular course of duties, you can, you know, you know...
I think, I think what Mark is saying is that a resolution that has a general authorization so you don't get into a tight time box.
Yeah.
I think that's a reasonable solution.
As you've pointed out before, and as we've all pointed out, we're all living under a charter that's relatively new. You know, this is, it's only 13 years old. We're all learning to live within it, and stuff has been done in the past that hasn't been proper to do. So we're, we're trying to adjust to that, and, and we're not perfect, as you've pointed out to us. This is in numerous times, and, you know, so, but when, you know, in the instance when, you know, we've needed to pass a resolution to hire counsel, we've done so. And that is our attempt here to be like, we think that this is a violation of the charter. And, you know, we talked about it last August, and we said, you know, let's, let's, let's get it harmonized so that we're all working on the same page here and working within the charter. And so we, we can pass general resolutions that authorize this sort of stuff. That's, that would, that's kind of what I'm talking about here. So that's, that's where I would like to see things go.
If you consider it extraordinary, then that, I have no problem working within the confines, but I don't consider this extraordinary, I consider this day-to-day operations. It's almost like me calling Paul and you calling Taylor, you know?
Right. That's authorized, it's okay. You can call Paul, you can call Paul at 12 o'clock at night.
No, don't call Paul.
But I'm, but I'm just saying that, you know, I don't consider this extraordinary. We're going to still disagree, but if, if we want to come to some kind of mediation and sit down and go over, I'm more than happy to work with it.
Let me do this.
I want to go forward.
Let me take a shot at a resolution to present to everybody, then you can take, you can hammer away at it. Okay? How's that sound?
Yeah, and I think the resolution ought to be, because we've used Karpinski in the past for correct...
20 years.
For personnel matters, so, I mean, my, my question, which, you know, we get to talk about extraordinary assumption, but, you know, is this a special legal counsel? I mean, we've used them in the past, so, you know, I mean, to me, that's even a question. Is this special, it says special legal counsel. So we could, we could hire a legal counsel, it's just special legal counsel, is this special? But before we start, you know, you know, getting into semantics, I think, you know...
Right, I hear your point.
I think a simple resolution that permits the use of Karpinski's, you know, their firm for personnel matters, something to that effect, and with some kind of limit, and some kind of cap to it, obviously.
The county has used, you know, he's that law firm represents Legit on many things, and the county probably for ever since 2006 has probably used that law in conjunction with Legit to deal with personnel matters.
Well, if it's used by the insurance company, how come he's billing us? Is, I mean, is...
He bills us until such time that the, that the claim comes in.
Yeah, that's the, that's the key part of it.
That's a key part, yeah.
But don't we call Legit first to make sure that...
Yeah.
We notify Legit of a potential claim as soon as we're aware of it. Essentially, their, their defense, if you will, starts when a formal claim is filed. Until then, he would be working on the county's nickel, but then, when a claim is filed, then that money is all counted against the deductibles that the county has to pay on every...
25,000.
So it's not like the, the county would be out that money anyway.
And that goes back to the fact that when that ordinance was passed, or a resolution was passed about deputy department heads, we felt at the time that we were making a mistake, and that's why I called the employment counselor or employment attorney to make sure we were okay in what we had to do to make it right, so...
Do you usually consult with Paul first before doing that?
Sometimes, on some things, yeah.
Why not all the time? I mean, he's our county attorney.
Paul's an excellent government attorney, but he's not, he's not what you get into the labor specifics when you get to, you know, somebody going to a labor contract, and I mean, he's not pension, he's not FOP. But as far as governmental law and what, what goes on, what, what's allowed, Paul's an excellent attorney.
But if you have a county attorney, and if you have a county attorney on, hired, and we have Paul hired, you know, why wouldn't everything go to him first for him to make the distinction whether it should go further to, like, Karpinski, or is it something we can handle in-house? I mean, I can't understand just bypassing our, our county attorney and jumping right to an outside attorney. I, I can't, I can't understand why.
And that probably was my choice only because of the fact that if I go with Paul, and Paul and I worked three or four hours on it, I owe Paul. And then Paul's going to say, "Okay, if it goes, got to go to Legit, it's going to be a claim." Why shouldn't I not go ahead and bring Legit into it in the beginning and be done with it?
That's not what I'm saying, hire Paul for three or four hours. What I'm saying is pick up the phone and call Paul, and I'm sure he, he gets paid for that too, by saying, "Paul, we've got this issue, what do you think?" I mean, I think that would be the ideal thing to do on any case, whether it's FOP, whether it, I mean...
And that's your choice.
It doesn't make sense to jump, to jump past somebody that you already have retained.
And when you become executive, you can make that choice. I made the choice because that was what, was going to do it, you know? That's how, you know, I didn't want to waste money talking to Paul, when I knew if it turned out to be a claim, I've got to go to Legit anyhow, so I went to that person, so...
So there hasn't been no claim filed?
On, on which issue? On the, on the other issue, one of those bills, yes. It's, it's a lawsuit now.
Okay, so is Legit, they'll get into it?
They will be picking it up, yes. The, I can't tell you which bill it was, you know, I don't have the numbers for the count bills, but one of them is a, is a definite lawsuit against Wycomico County.
It's been, claim's been filed.
Yeah, and I don't know that that bill, for what my question was, was either one of those bills. You, you checked Munis, you can pull through, Munis pays all the bills, or, or HR pays all the bills through Karpinski. So you, you go on, search back further, and you'll find that Karpinski's been paid several times this year in, in different amounts, so...
Yeah, well, what I'd say, Bob, is it's probably a real simple solution that we meet, we meet for the most part every two weeks. We're pretty accessible. If we don't meet every two weeks, we, we, we hold special sessions, and we can hold a special session. We had one, I believe, last month, so that can be arranged as well, you know, and to try to cooperate with this. But I would like to think that at least now, you know, we have all the cards on the table, we both recognize where, you know, where we stand and what our restrictions are.
I'm, I'm happy to work with you on it.
That'd be great. I would, I would think too that if there are any, any existing cases right now, I'll call them cases for lack of a better word, that you're aware of, the council should know this, let's say, at our next meeting, so that...
No, you, you shouldn't know it, because it's personnel, and if it gets out, it can't be, can't be...
Well, we can hold a closed session.
You know, that hasn't really helped a whole lot sometimes in the past.
Well, it's, again, it's, it's what we're required to do, so...
You're not required to do anything with personnel, John. You're required to be legislative, but not personnel.
Bob, I'm, I'm quite familiar with the charter.
Really?
I really, I am, thank you. And I'm not suggesting that we hold a personnel issue as a council, because I know that, that's the executive's responsibility. But if you are going to hire outside legal counsel, it is the council's authority to approve that. If you would like to have that in closed session so that we can discuss it first, that would be fine, and the council, if they're willing to, could approve that in open session so that we are following the charter as is required, then we would be glad to accommodate, whether it open or closed sessions, to make that happen. But if there's any ongoing procedures right now, we would need to know that so that we can get a resolution, or you could enter, I don't know whether you would introduce a resolution for us so that we can make sure we're all on the same page and we're doing it right.
And, and we don't necessarily need to know names, you know, I mean, I mean, you know, I understand what you're saying about personnel issues, and they can be touchy, it would seem though, if we're setting, if the county is having lawsuits, that that's something the council should at least be aware of too, even if we don't know the specific names or anything like that, I mean, that would, you know, we don't, we don't need to know the inner workings of personnel, but if the county's setting up, getting up to be sued, you know, that seems like something at least we should be aware of, just, just so we know, so.
Well, I mean, you, you remember a couple of years ago, we got involved in another one where a council member was involved in that, and we, we ended up having to settle with Legit, so, that's all I'm going to tell you on that one, but at the same time, you know, maybe, you know, I don't mind letting Paul know, and Paul wants to let your attorney know, and that, keep through that, you know, I, I have no problem with that, but to notify the entire council and then go lead it on a blog or something, I'm not, I'm not going to put that at risk.
Well, that's, that's an assumption, I, I, I mean, you're making an assumption there, Bob.
It's a pretty damn good assumption, so.
Well, that is your assumption, either way, we're required to approve these, and that's all we're asking to do, is just follow procedure, and that's, that's great.
So, so, let me get this straight, though, any, any case with Karpinski or any other attorney, are you considering that extraordinary?
I think Mr. Wilber can help you with that, Mr. Wilber, we're going to let, let you take the lead on this, I think you are more aware of the requirements of the charter than anybody in the room.
All right, we'll talk more then.
Let me, let me work a resolution for everybody to see.
Okay.
It would seem to be any council, any special council, outside that, the Department of Law, needs to be approved by the county council, so that, so.
So, now, when we go to pension, and we go to Lindsay Rader for a bond, do you want to prove her every year?
I think that's what's required, or we can have a continuing resolution that would do that, I mean, I mean, that's.
I agree.
Most of the time, you know, most of your resolutions get passed seven to oh, you know, you know, so, so, stuff like that would be kind of pro forma sort of thing.
Okay, I mean, as long as we do it at the beginning of the year with the budget, I mean, do it with the budget is fine, so we don't have to come back every two weeks or every month.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, we don't necessarily need every instance, but I think it should be.
Let's look at doing this as a batch, and get it done, get this issue behind us.
I think that'd be the way to go.
I think it's a good idea, Paul.
Mr. Cannon, can I offer just an observation, I think part of the services that Mr. Culver has described are what I would call general legal services, yes, they might have involved personnel broadly, apparently, it had something to do with the charter amendments that were made, I think when he gets an opinion like that, be it from Paul, Karpinski, or Joe Blow, it ought to come to council, if it's something to do with the, the charter, something in the code, then council is entitled, excuse me, entitled to that information, the money that's being paid to these attorneys, they're providing services to the county, and the, and the council should get that information without having to ask for it, if it's, if it's significant, as he suggested it was.
Thank you, Stu, any other discussion, any other questions, John, thank you very much, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Opportunity Zone Enhancement Program, we have Mr. Dave Ryan here, Dave?
Good to have you here, and this is a good program, isn't it, we have a good program.
Hey, Dave.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Dave Ryan, Salisbury Wycomico Economic Development, great to see the baseballers in earlier today, I was, as you, some of you know, I'm from the area, and played for Fruitland Little League, on the Lions, back in the Stone Age, unlike the, unlike the kids here today, I sat mostly on the bench while they played, and that was, so I admire them, and, but nonetheless, had fun nonetheless, and a great community experience, what I'd like to do, if I may, and I'll yield to whatever the council wants, but, given the, the time of the, the evening, I'll keep it brief, and maybe in three sections, one, an overview of the federal legislation on opportunity zones, and maybe an overview of where the state stands on opportunity zones, and maybe an overview of where, where we're at as a county, and, and an economic development initiative with the opportunity zone, so it was, the zones were created through federal legislation, the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of two thousand and seventeen, and, and theoretically, it works like this, the investors with capital gains can take those gains and invest in an opportunity fund, which then can invest in an opportunity zone, in exchange for investing those funds into, the gains into a fund, the investor is yielded three benefits primarily, one, it's the deferral of tax on those gains, two, there's a step up in basis, which is really an effective tax cut, when he, when he does pay the gains on those, the tax on those gains, and three, the reinvested money, the new money that's invested in the funds, if he keeps it in there for a period of ten years, is, is tax exempt, so there's, there's really considerable, on the front side, incentives for the investors to put private capital into these opportunity funds, on the backside, those funds will then seek projects, tangible projects, tangible property, real property, personal property, or business operations within the opportunity zone, and the, the theory is to, to invest in those areas of communities, then, which perhaps need the, the, the investment the most, so, that's, that's in theory how the opportunity zone works and, and the funds work, Mr. Hogan, through his legislative initiative, has offered the, I think it's the Opportunity Enhancement Act, something, something along that lines, that basically takes some of his key programs that exist today, and enhances those, or adds benefits to those programs.
John.
If, if they're within the.
Bob, Bob, if you, you certainly take it outside if you'd like.
Sorry.
That's fine, the state, Mr. Hogan's initiative enhances existing programs, if they're located within the opportunity zone, so the job creation tax credit is normally a three thousand dollar credit, and if it's in the opportunity zone, it's thirty-two fifty, enterprise zone, on the wage side, is a thousand dollars tax credit for employee, if it's in the zone, it's eleven hundred, more jobs for mailers act, the one Maryland program, the biosecurity tax credit, the cybersecurity, it's a tax get, biotechnology, cybersecurity, same type of thing, so he's using existing programs, it's in the zone, they're enhanced benefits, it's as simple as that, so where are we in this, this process, we've been following the legislation for some time, Wycomico has a pretty large swath of land within the opportunity zone, we've reached out to developers and brokers about six, starting six months ago, eight months ago, trying to uncover potential projects, and then learn about the program itself, we've identified, we, we put it on our website, we've worked with Bob's team and planning and zoning guys to come up with two maps, one's in a PDF form, and one is a, you know, type in the address, and it'll immediately see if your property's in, in the opportunity zone within Wycomico County, and then we put a forum on our website too, it's a one-page forum that anybody can fill out, and describing their property, and we'll seek to match that particular project with particular fund managers or opportunity funds around the country, and we've done that, and just from a Google search on who's running these funds, and, and just call blindly, and, most of the time, we get no's, but, what we're finding is the closer the fund is to our region, the, the more, more traction we get, so the challenge right now, we're finding, I think, is uncovering projects, quite frankly, that's why I appreciate the, the invitation here, is just to get the word out, so we spread the word on our social media channels, and it's been widely circulated about the opportunity zones, in my opinion, it's, it's been off to a slow start around our country and, and our county, and the primary reason is, one, you know, lack of knowledge about, about the zones, and, but, but more importantly, is not all the guidelines are out yet, so investors are taking somewhat of a leap of faith and, and investing in certain projects without that surety of what the rules are, so you're going to play, play a game, and you're not quite certain of, of the rules, you know for the most part what they are, but other, other guidelines will be forthcoming, so, we're out there trying to uncover projects, we've identified three or four, we're working on at this point in time, each fund has different parameters, different structures, different capital stacks, and, so it's a, it's a wide variety of funds, but, what you're seeing is a large, private capital, amount, amount of private capital going into communities around the country, us being one.
You got one question, Joe, hold on, sorry.
Or, quick question, I remember a couple of years ago, when we were talking about this, a lot of the talk was around establishing, like, local fund investors, but it sort of appears now, it's become more of a larger, you know, the, you know, the, the investment funds are more larger regional investment, you know, that, that is where that private capital's coming from, I mean, is, is my observation correct, I mean?
Angel tax funds, that, that's what I was getting, I'm curious about what happened to that.
We've been friends a long time, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
I, I think it's a, I, I think it's a wide variety of funds, Bill, really, from the developer realizing one, one event that triggers a capital gain, and say five hundred thousand dollars, to a bank that has a half, you know, five hundred million dollar fund, I think they're all over the board, you're right in the fact that you're seeing a lot of banks and hedge funds, and some of the really large, large guys are, are out there, but what we've identified, we haven't had a problem identifying funds, so we're in contact with probably half a dozen funds, ranging, ranging from probably thirty million up to four hundred million.
Two questions, Josh.
Yeah, because Senator Record was carrying the bill for a while, the angel tax investments, and I don't know whatever happened with that, I think it's kind of what Bill was getting at, there, there's a lot of these folks around St. Michael's, or others that are on the shore that were looking to invest, store back story, and then they couldn't do so, because there was no tax, there was no benefit to do so, so, that's, I don't know what all that meant.
I apologize if that's what you were referring to, angel tax credits, as opposed to.
There was local interest, but it seems like.
Yeah.
You know, but the investment's not coming from local.
But, but for this program, that, that may be a different topic, but, but for this program, the opportunity zone, the, the funds have to be capitalized through a gain, and you hundred, within that, a hundred and eighty days within, within that gain.
It's a glorified ten thirty-one exchange.
It, it is, it is, except that, yeah, it's a glorified.
You don't defer, you actually.
You could, it, 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 but that's real estate, and, and it's a, it's an enhanced, a glorified version, because you can, you can realize a sale of stock and things like that for capital gain, so it is glorified, you're right.
I know, right.
Sir.
How come sole proprietorships excluded out of this?
I have no, it's to qualify for the fund, they just said it was an LLC, or partnership, or corporation, I have no clue, Mr. Alloway.
You know, when the task force came to town, Lieutenant Gov, Lieutenant Governor came to town with the task force, and one of the speakers got up and, and really had a rather poignant moment where they, where they said, I, I don't understand what I do, is there any layman's terms that you can, for the general public, that you can break it down, let's say, someone who has property, and, and, and I guess it would be good to know where this property is, we don't have a map here, but I know it's the north, the, so the northeast quadrant on Route thirteen, up towards Delaware, right?
Right, it's, you can go to SWED.org, and the first button you'll see, it's a, a button we put there on purpose, just as it says opportunity zone, you can, you can find the map, but it basically covers Northwood Industrial Park, goes up the east side of thirteen, up to the fifty-four, over to, I think, Pittsville Road, down to Daggsboro Road, down Holt Road, and Parsonsburg Road, gets into fifty, then goes around the bypass, and comes back up to Fruitland on the east side, so.
If someone owned a piece of property there, what exactly opportunities could they?
You could, you could, as an example, let's take a, a five acre parcel of land, and you want to construct a multifamily unit on that parcel.
Or, maybe if you wanted to come to you, and you would find someone that wanted to do a multi-unit possibly for this land.
Could do that, could do that, yeah, we're happy, we're happy to help, but, I mean, I mean, something like that would, would be a qualifying or eligible project for someone investing in the, in the opportunity zone, it's got to be in the zone, and it's got to be within the parameters of the fund that they want to, they want to do, but.
What, what incentives are there to, I'll just use John as an example, if, if he was the owner of that five acre parcel, is there any incentives to him as the owner, to understand the incentives to the investors, but what about to the owner who has that property in the opportunity zone?
Yeah, it, it's important to keep in mind that the investments are in the form of equity, okay, so it's not a, not a loan, but it's, but it's equity investment, so, the property owner, or the project owner must be willing to at least cede some equity into that project, at least for a period of time, this is where we would, we could really use some additional guidelines, but, one fund, Mr. McCain is, that I'm familiar with, works something like this, they'll invest as equity for a ten-year period of time, seventy percent of the project cost, twenty percent conventional, and then ten percent from the, the principal, in ten years, they want the, want their money back on the equity side, so you would refinance, so it's a fairly attractive stack of financing for that particular project, paying interest only on that seventy percent for a period of ten years, so the benefit would be, if you don't have access to capital, and you've got a deep, good project, then you could perhaps do it where otherwise you may not.
So, is this going to be steered towards investors, who then would, like, maybe come to you, and then you would hook them up with someone that has the property in that zone, or is this going to come from the landowner who wants to?
It, it's, I think, I think the, I don't, I believe it should not be a single entry point, I, I think whoever has the, I'd say, opportunity, but, but, but the project, that, that's, that, we're happy to call us, or, you know, call us, but, and we're trying to connect those, we're trying to connect projects with, with funds, but they wouldn't have to go through us, they could do their own project, an investor could do his own project, or her own project.
So, would Bill's individual that has five acres call you and say, what do you have for me, I mean, is that like so farfetched?
Again, and we'll say, we don't know, I mean, we'll say, where's the property again, you know, what are you trying to do with this property, what's its zone, just like anyone else.
See, I don't think the landowner's going to have anything to do with that property, I think the landowner's just going to say, this is my property, now that it's in an opportunity zone, what, what can I do with it, and, and I think they're, they're looking for someone to invest and.
Well, they have to have an idea of what they want to do with it.
The, the landowner does?
I would think so, and, and otherwise, you're going to go to some fund manager with fifty million dollars, with ten acres, and you're going to say, what are, what are you going to do with my land, he's going to say, huh, he's going to say, what? He's going to, he's.
You got to sell him something.
Yeah, you got to, you got to have a project, I mean, you have to have a project to present, because, keep in mind, I prefer not to get into the weeds, but I'm prepared to, if we, if we'd like, once he realizes that gain, he has a hundred and eighty days to invest in something, so there's not a lot of time to go out and try to find out, okay, what are we going to do with this ten acres, he's got to have a project ready to go.
Is your, is your, is your organization sort of a clearinghouse for this, because what I'm trying to get at, Dave, is that you have the land, the landowners here, and then you have the investors here, how do they meet, I mean, the, the investors are not, may not even be quite sure that there's any, any properties that are good for their investment, or anyone willing to that, somehow or other, there has to be some type of a, a catalyst.
Well, you try to get the word out as best you can, that, that, you know, we have this opportunity zone, this is the program, you can call us anytime, you know, you sent a couple of landowners to us, and, not going to work out, but, but thank you for that, but, you know, again, you, you really have to have a project, though, because there's no time for someone, especially outside our market area, to, to really understand the marketplace, and go through a, a process, to say, a hotel will work here, or a multifamily unit here, it's really not, not, no time for that.
It sounds to me like a lot of this area that's included is not going to be able to be used anyway, because you can put a multifamily unit, unit on sixty, on, on Line Road, you know, five miles out of Delmar, because there's no septic.
There's, 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 that, there's, it could be commercial properties, industrial properties, it could be investment in business operations, so.
A lot of it, the way you talk, is zone dag.
I know, I, I didn't draw it, I didn't draw it, I get calls from, you know, Fruitland guys, and, and say, how come we're not in it, you know, I've never seen a zone yet, the enterprise zone, the hub zone, the rise zone, the opportunity zone, that, you know, it has to stop and start somewhere, and it's always stops at the wrong spot for somebody, and I wish that wasn't the case, we had no influence, they didn't want any influence, we tried, they said, thanks, but no thanks, and that's just what happened, so, it is, we do have a large swath, and there will be projects within that zone, done where otherwise would not have, have happened, in my opinion.
If you go from Salisbury to Delmar, and then when you cross the Delaware line, they must have a heck of an opportunity zone on the north side of the Delaware line, because there's a heck of a stuff up there, and it's not happening on the south side of the Delaware line.
Anyone else have a question? Sir.
So, maybe it'll pick up.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I think, I think there will be some projects that, that will happen that otherwise would not happen, and I think that's a good thing.
That's good, anything, yeah, so, you're saying that you have, did you have a question, Josh?
Yeah, just one, one point, for the last few years, I chaired the Rural Maryland Council, and the Rural Maryland Council, I'm still in the executive committee, but we're, they're highly interested in maybe doing a regional event down here, something that maybe we, you know, the, the RMC could fund, or, or help host something, so it sounds like there'd be great partnership, and I can put you in touch with Charlotte, if, if you know, but, it'd be really great to get to, to the council president's point, getting that connection between, and I don't know how we do that.
Well, there's, there's no magic bullet, I, I don't think, I mean, it's on our site, the state of Maryland has an exchange, we have properties and projects on that exchange, which is how I developed relationships with certain funds and, and, and a different market area within Maryland, so we're on that exchange, we utilize it, we're trying to, our best to get it out, I, I think it's been widely publicized that there's these animals called opportunity zones, the. the, the devil's always in the details, and, and that's why I think, um, either the persons that are starting their own fund, uh, or someone that has a project, it's probably a nickel well spent to have a conversation with somebody, um, I'm not saying I know, but somebody that, that understands a, a little bit about the project, a little bit about the fund parameters. Because each fund, one fund will say, all I wanna do is invest in businesses. All I wanna do is invest in multifamily, you know, all I wanna do is invest in retail, and, and they're all over the board. So there's no, I'm afraid there's no, I wish there was, there, there's, there's magic bullet to reach everyone, but those who have a project, then feel free to, uh, contact us. And we're happy, if we can, if we can bridge that gap, we want to. And, and, and identify projects ourselves that we, we see locally.
Dave, we appreciate you.
Sure.
Take the time to, to explain it to us and, uh, take the initiative to make it happen.
Clear, 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 clear it up.
We'll, we'll have you back and you, uh, and you can give us an update on how successful it was.
Yeah, perfect, perfect. Well, I, you know, it, um, um, to get the most benefit from a, from an investment side, you would invest by the end of this year, it's a seven-year holding period, so seven goes to twenty-six and twenty-twenty-six, and that's the, uh, when the initial gains taxes is due, so. You'll, you'll, uh, doesn't mean you can't invest in projects after this, just most benefit can happen by, uh, by the end of the year. Anyway, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Good to see you.
Yep, nice.
Thank you, Dave.
Next item on the agenda is the fiscal year two thousand twenty revenue forecasting and general fund discussion. Mr. Strausberg, how are you?
Good evening.
We appreciate you taking this on, Wayne.
Mister President.
You, you had recognized the fact.
Mister President.
Yes.
Um, PAC fourteen, I believe, needs to change the tape, can we take like a two-minute recess?
All right, sounds good. Want some popcorn?
They're fine until they become teenagers.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
Good to go.
Yes, we are.
Uh, good evening, I'm Wayne Strausberg, Director of Administration.
Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
So, John, would you like me to, to just lead out with, with an overview?
Yes.
Of at least what my thinking is on this matter?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Uh, okay, so, to start with, um, our per capita general revenue, okay, is ranked twenty-second out of twenty-four jurisdictions. Now, when you look at that, there are really two functions to that. One is our tax effort and the other is the wealth that's available to be taxed. So, so let's spin through that. Our local income tax is the highest rate allowable in the state, it's three-point-two percent. When you look at our property tax rate, and I gave you several spreadsheets that showed the rankings for the, for the entire state, showed rankings, uh, for rural counties, what you'll find is, uh, for rural counties, our property tax is higher than rural county average. And, and when you look at our property tax rate, our real property tax rate compared to other jurisdictions in the state, it's by and large, uh, a, a fairly, um, average, uh, tax rate effort. Our low revenue ranking, in my opinion, suggests that what we really have at issue here is, is, um, a low wealth base. And a low wealth base. So, so the wealth that's available to us, uh, is, is again ranked anywhere, depends on the ranking that you look at, we're somewhere twenty-one to twenty-two in the state in terms of, of our ranking. That's a significant problem because we have two very low taxing jurisdictions within an easy commute. You can be in Sussex County in twenty minutes, depending on traffic, you can be in Worcester County in thirty minutes, depending on, on traffic. We provide, however, the, the, the employment and commerce center for a four-county area. And, and what I suspect is, is that high wage income earners are inclined to live in lower taxing jurisdictions because of the impact on their wealth. If you look at, um, if you look at Worcester County, their local income tax rate is one-point-seven-five percent, it's nearly one-half of ours. If you look at Sussex County, there is no income tax, there isn't a local income tax. So if you're a very high wealth earner, you're going to be inclined to wanna live within a fairly easy commute, and those are easy commutes, so.
Wayne, can I, you know, I think you may even understate the case, um, um, I think there's a report done a few years ago, um, I mean, and you may get to this, where he talked about our, he talked about, um, you know, remember who did it down at, at SU, talked about not only looking at the county property tax is a little bit misleading because many people and many businesses are within the city, and so you need to also count city property taxes, and, and when you do that.
And I was gonna touch on that.
Okay, sorry, I was trying to.
No, no, I was gonna touch on that.
Even worse than the kind of you.
No, I was gonna touch on that, because, uh, and, and particularly when you look at, at businesses, businesses are by and large located within the, the urban core, the municipalities, because of the water and sewer, and therefore they're being taxed, their property tax is doubled. So it, it, uh, in, in some respects, I believe that we have become somewhat of a commuter county. And from my standpoint, I look at it and, and, and I'm personally not inclined to suggest to the council that we should, should be looking at imposing additional taxes and fees on wealth because I think that's actually gonna work against us. Rather, I think we should, what we should be looking at is building our wealth base. And we've touched on it earlier, uh, to build that wealth base, Joe mentioned that the growth north of, of the Delaware, well, that's water and sewer. And we, we, I think we have the capacity in Salisbury to, um, go a long way towards not only developing our designated growth area, if we can work out a suitable arrangement with the city of Salisbury, but we could also address the corridor along Old Ocean City Road where we're gonna lose wealth because those homeowners, uh, are at some point in time not gonna be able to continue to stay in their homes because of failing septic. So, you know, I'm encouraging us to really focus, um, and really focus on how do we, how do we, uh, provide water and sewer to the designated growth area and those areas that are going to need water and sewer that are already occupied. So I asked, um.
Have you, um, talked to the people over in Sussex? Cause you noticed they don't have water and sewer, they have these companies come in, they build these developments that provide the water and sewer.
No, I haven't done that yet, I haven't done that yet.
But they do have county sewer, but they have county sewer districts.
Yeah, they have county sewer, so I, I'm not proposing, I'm not proposing that we simply focus on utilizing Salisbury, utilizing Fruitland, utilizing, uh, Delmore. What I'm saying is, is that I think we have to get very, very serious about how do we provide water and sewer to this, to the designated growth area? Because I believe if you flash that up there, Wes.
Sure. So, yeah, we have a PDF that we want to share and I guess seeing PAC fourteen.
See what you're talking about, Wayne, honestly, I mean, it's been literally the highest priority as far as the councils have stated for the last four or five years. The thing is, where do you start biting that apple? And I think it has to come, it has to be generated from the state level down because it's gonna take funding.
It's, and, and let me touch on that, John, be, because, um, when, when you mentioned the state.
Right.
I'm very seriously concerned about state finances, um, because the state, uh, they took midway through this legislative session, they took a four-hundred-million-dollar write-down on their revenue estimate, um, Andy Shoffel, uh, from the Comptroller's Office presented, um, to Mako. I don't know whether you were there, were you there, John, when he presented?
No.
Okay, he presented to Mako and, and, you know, I, I sense that we have already here locally entered an economic slowdown because I track, I track the employment. Our income taxes are holding up mostly, but you've gotta recall that the income tax distributions to the, to, to the local jurisdictions lagged by about fourteen months. So when I'm looking in real time at income tax distributions, that's based on employment and income from fourteen months ago.
Right.
So we have not yet, I don't think, seen the effects of the, the loss of jobs. We had our high point back in, uh, twenty-seventeen and I think since then, we, we lost about two thousand jobs and then we've leveled out. But at some point in time, I think that's gonna catch up to us. So we, we, um, we also have not yet seen the impact of fifteen-dollar-an-hour minimum wage, which is gonna come at us over the next five years. Fifteen dollars an hour, um, on a forty-hour work week is thirty-one-thousand-two-hundred dollars. The median individual income in Yiddon County is thirty-five thousand.
You're gonna see, you're gonna see a, a great jump up in inflation when that starts hitting.
And I, and I'm concerned about that.
You're gonna be paying eight dollars for a cheeseburger at one of the fast food places instead of six.
I'm very concerned about that.
And, you know, I've talked to small business people, restaurant owners, and, um, you know, they're scared to death of this thing. And, you know, then you talk to somebody on social security and they're saying, you know, we're not getting a raise.
That's right.
You know, every, you know, the people out here working, which, you know, is gonna get, go to fifteen dollars an hour, but the people that with the spending, the people with the spending power, you know, your elderly, you know, the people, they're not getting a raise, you know? So I think you're gonna see a terrible inflation, you're gonna see a drawdown in spending.
And you're gonna see unemployment increase.
I, I, I can almost assure you that we're gonna see unemployment rise.
That's right.
And we haven't, and we have no idea yet what the state is gonna do with regard to the Kerwin Commission. Two other things that concern me is that we've got two fairly significant sources of income over which we have no control at all. We get about nine-point-six million dollars from the state in our disparity grant. That, that, that's an annual, that's really an annual negotiation, you know, that's really not codified. So when the state is facing pressure, I think, on their own revenue and their own spending, some of that is necessarily gonna come, uh, downstream. Highway user revenue, we've never been fully restored. This, this, this coming year's budget, uh, for roads is about ten million-two. We get a million-four in HUR, that's an eight-point-eight-million-dollar shortfall because we don't get our highway user revenue.
How much, how much are we getting?
Million-four that's coming.
Compared to what we got ten years ago?
Seven million. Yeah, we were getting six to seven million.
Seven million dollars a year.
It's a lot different. The last few years, it's been about six-hundred thousand, so we did get a slight bump.
We, we, we might as well forget that, I mean, I know it gets, keeps bringing brought up every year, you know, saying, well, we're having a shortfall because of highway HUR money, but it's over with. You know, the only thing we can hope for now is to get some more as it comes along.
It's not gonna come.
You know, I see all these, you know, all your worries here, I hope that reflects in things in your spending when it comes along as far as, uh, the budget, right?
Well, we can get back to your, 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 your question about sewer. I mean, you know, I'm gonna be advocate, be advocate for that, you know, you got your growth area, you up there. But my question revolves around, uh, you know, the, the, improve our wealth situation, uh, you know, you're talking about growth.
Correct.
Uh, so I guess my question though becomes, how will that generate revenue?
It generates revenue through increased property taxes.
Well, let's stop right there.
Because your base is increasing.
We can't go past two percent with revenue, increase our base all you want, but if it's two percent, two percent revenue is two percent revenue.
It's two percent on a higher base each year.
Right, but, but still, it only grows at two percent. I mean, our revenue next year, property tax, our, our base could grow at twenty percent, our revenue can only grow at two percent.
Two percent of the prior year.
Right.
Correct.
Right, so you're always gonna be.
You can go through the revenue cap if you choose to.
Well, I know, right, I'm, you know, which I'm fully aware of that.
Right.
But, but you still, that, that's the whole issue, I mean, like I said, you know, this isn't a discussion on, you know, the quote, the revenue cap, but like or not, I mean, you know, that's what we have. So that's the dilemma of trying to grow your way out of it, you know. You know, every other community in America, growing your tax base is a way to, right, that should grant, should generate revenue because your tax base grows. But growing our tax base, it only, it only will grow, the tax base might grow, but the revenue's only gonna grow at two percent a year.
Well, they can tax, he's talking about income taxes.
He's not talking about income taxes, he's talking about property taxes.
But you're gonna grow income taxes too.
Right, I know that, I'm not talking about income, but I'm talking about, you know, half our money comes from, from property tax, give or take.
No, you're right.
Right, you know, forty-eight percent, whatever, but I mean, but it's half, it's half and half.
No, well, that includes all.
Our two, our two.
That includes personal property and includes utility.
But the two main sources of revenue, like everybody else, is income tax and property tax.
Correct.
And we're essentially capped at both, and we're capped at income tax in terms of rate and we're capped at revenue in terms of, we have a revenue cap on property tax side.
We're capped on rate, but my concern, Bill, is that if, if we are already a high-tax jurisdiction, which we are, uh, how, how do we, how do we strategically position ourselves to be more attractive, uh, to businesses and to residential development when we've got two very low taxing jurisdictions within a very easy.
Oh, now I agree, now I agree with you.
I think we'd be.
I still agree with you in terms of growing our base, but it's not gonna, I, I still agree with you there.
Right.
But, I mean, our tax rate, as our, as our base grows, our tax rate will decline because of the revenue cap. Fact, I mean, it's not something to think about, that's just math. I mean, if we grow, if we grow at ten percent, revenue cap's at two percent.
Your mill rate.
Your mill rate will go, will go down every year.
Your constant yield.
Your constant yield will continually drop every year.
You get the first year, you know, new construction is a freebie each year, but then.
But you pick it up the next year.
But it falls in the next year.
Right.
Correct.
Weston?
Um, on the.
Designate growth.
Yeah, so when, um, it, it gets on the screen, uh, we've presented a, a map and I can zoom in on specific areas too, but I wanted to point out at the top left, you can see the white area is, uh, ag land for the most part, and that's the majority of the county. You know, probably a little over two-thirds.
Make that sure it's ag land, not farmland, cause a lot of that's marsh.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah, I'll say ag and, ag and forest and Chesapeake forest lands and all that. Um, the, uh, the light blue is the designated growth area that's set in zoning and you'll see around each municipal area, um, that's, that's where it kind of surrounds, with the exception of the airport sort of out there by itself. And then in yellow, we have the municipality, so I'm gonna zoom in, um, around, I'll go west of, west of Salisbury. So this is, oh, crap, wrong.
There it is in the bar.
There you go, there you go. There's no mouse up here.
You have touchscreen on it?
No, this is, this is, uh. Yeah, I, I think this laptop's from the nineties, um. Okay, so, so again, the, uh, the, the yellow area shown here, um, is, this is Salisbury, uh, city limits. Where the mouse hand is, is Pemberton Drive, Pemberton Parks here. The yellow, you can see the city has annexed bits and pieces along Pemberton Road. That used to make it fun in terms of snow plowing, you put your plow down, pull it up, down, up and so forth. Um, we, we have agreements. We, we have agreements to handle that, so that's, that's fun.
The previous Public Works Director said he'd just plow all the way through.
Yeah, no, we have, we have agreements now, we're, it's taken care of. But, but the point is, if you look at this blue area, I'll say to the northwest, this is all what is designated as growth area. Now, earlier, Councilman Hastings brought up the septic systems and the failing. You can see these, these small lots here, these are all lots that are on septic at the moment. Nisdale is over here.
Your house?
Yeah, yeah, there, you know, you want to point out your house, Mark? So, the, the, the point is, this is all potential for water and sewer expansion and this is just to the west of Salisbury. If we go a bit to the south, we can see here's some of the designated growth area around Fruitland, Riverside Drive extended. So, the, the point is, while, when we talk about extending water and sewer, we're not talking about the entire county, we're talking about zoned areas where, working with the municipalities and, and where it seemed to make sense that as these cities grew, this is the way we would extend it. The conversation Councilman Davis brought up about package plants basically, or, or water plants put together, that, that is an option. Public Works has a study that if it's not gone out to bid, it should go out to bid soon. That's going to look at that in addition to the, the failing septic. So, trying to put some sort of plan in place as to what is the best way going forward and what are our options. We may find that Fruitland's more acceptable to extending their services out there in our urban service district format than another municipality.
But with that in mind, if you do that, eventually those, regardless of Fruitland, Salisbury, whatever, they're going to do just like they did on Pemberton Drive. They're going to annex those places in and they're going to take them right out the county.
How do you keep, how do you keep that from happening?
You can't. If they don't have that water sewer.
Yeah, yeah.
And they say, we can offer it to them, they're going to take it.
You've got to find a way.
And you can see what they're going to do now, with their heart, or doubling the rates on these municipalities, small areas.
Yeah, and, and.
And they're going to force them to come into the city.
Correct. So, so that could behoove us to get into the business ourselves.
Yeah.
And, and the urban service districts, when you're paying 50% more and the city raises,
say Salisbury raised their rates 5% water and sewer, that's actually 7.5% increase to your, your water rates if you're in an urban service district.
And they're going to force them to say, if you want cheaper rates, come into the city.
I've always been, I've always been concerned about that, Ernie, that, oh, you know, if, if this continues, this trend continues, municipalities are going to grow and there won't be a county anymore.
Will be no council.
But, but that's not necessarily a bad thing, I don't think, really? You know, you're going to have, the municipalities expanding, the services are going to be given to the public. The key is, is that, you know, as long as they're willing to pay, the real trick is, is that the individuals who own the property or own the house, they have to ask to be annexed, correct?
The annexation will not be.
They're going to force them by raising the rates.
And that's the problem on the east side.
But what I would say to you is, the first decision that you've got to make, and that's why we've got Public Works studying this, the first decision that you have to make is, at, at the end of the day, what really is the most efficient way of delivering water and sewer to that entire.
Area.
Growth area.
Well, you know, George.
And is it, and is it expansion of the existing capacity, utilize, utilization of the existing capacity, coming to some agreement with the municipalities who own those systems as to how we might do that in a way that works for them, works for us, or do we get in the water and sewer business ourselves? And, and, and I don't have the answer to that yet, but we really need that answer and we need it.
The other thing you need an answer to is where do you start?
And where do you start?
You know, you know, we know where the problem areas are.
Correct.
But, you know.
I'd start with keeping people in their homes, that's the first.
And that's where the problem.
That's the first place.
That's where the problem areas, you know, we know where the problem areas are.
Right.
You are talking about a study, Weston, but George Mosson-Bier did a study and, and it's out there.
Yes.
And it very clearly says, the municipalities, they evaluated the entire scenario and they said municipalities, using municipalities is pretty much the only option we have in Y Comico County.
I don't, I.
It, it's going to be the cheapest option, the question is, are they going to.
I'm not saying I agree with it.
Yeah, are they going to work with us?
I think it's the least expensive, but that's before you consider the points that Ernie has brought up, is it the least expensive to the citizens who are going to be living in those areas or the businesses living in them? And, and that I don't know. And, and I think it's worth having and we've had a couple informal discussions with Mayor Day about some sort of a, a construct that we could put in place where the city would extend services into the growth area or areas that need the service and that they would do it on an urban services base, basis, but that it would phase out over some period of time.
Yeah.
So that annexation wouldn't occur for maybe, you know, 10 years.
Or whenever the property was transferred.
Or whenever the property was sold, so.
Then you'd have started up another problem.
I, most of my district is in the county and I talk to my people all the time.
They don't want to be in the city.
I haven't talked to one person that said they want to be annexed into the city of Salisbury. So, if we keep expanding, they're going to end up, and these houses are going to end up being forced at some point to get in water and sewer or to buy water and sewer from the municipalities and, and be annexed. And they don't want to be double taxed, that's one of the main things they say, is they don't want to be double taxed. So, if we keep expanding it, those people aren't going to be able to move further out of the county, they're going to move somewhere else where it's cheaper to live.
Well, Weston, something that, maybe with your engineering background, you might know about. So, let's say the county wanted to pursue a row and wastewater treatment plan to do that, is that something that is even, would be possible? I mean, you know, aside from the expense, which is, you know, would the state allow another, you know, us to put another wastewater treatment plan on the Y Comico River? I, I mean, you know, what, what do you, you know, did you have an opinion about that?
I, I think it would be more realistic doing package plants for regions. So, it'd be a smaller, it wouldn't be the size of the city's treatment plant and given, as you look at, as you look at this map and you see how it's like a, a harsh jigsaw puzzle, it would be hard to run county sewer pipes down roads that would possibly have city sewer pipes and keeping, yeah, it, it would be a mess, but in, in other areas, it's possible. Honestly, the, I, I would think the ideal situation would be if, if we do go Water and Sewer Authority or, or whatever format that takes, would be putting all treatment plants under one organization. Hampton Roads Sanitary District is what I'm most familiar with with my time down in Hampton Roads. All the treatment plants, whether it is Newport News or Virginia Beach, Hampton, they're all under the same roof. That also allows if one treatment plant is struggling with nitrogen, but other plants are over treating, from a regulatory standpoint, they can say, all right, you're fine, whereas if it's just one plant and you're in violation, you're in violation.
Do you mean including the existing ones in Fruitland and Sharp Town and Salisbury?
Correct. It, because just like it's cheaper to run pipe from existing, they have labs, they have existing labs to test water quality, they have existing staff. It would, it would be ideally, and, and, you know, that may not be feasible, it may not be political, but putting them all under one roof.
In light of this, now, keep one thing in mind, this work session was about the general fund and revenue.
And, and that note.
This is a great topic and we're all.
Yeah, so.
I do got a quick, one quick comment, but.
Let me just say, we are running out of time on this topic, what about the general fund and revenue?
Just, just one thing real quick, John, the, or actually, you're talking about the Hampton Roads thing, but Virginia, Virginia Beach is actually, I don't know about all Hampton Roads, but Virginia Beach is one municipality, is that correct? It's not a county, it's just.
They.
It's one in the, you have a couple like that in Virginia.
Yes, so, so they, they don't have a county that oversees them.
Right, there's no county.
They've absorbed like Elizabeth City County into.
Right, they've absorbed, right.
If you want to see a good model, I know you should point.
But the, but, but the, what I was going to say was, the, as part of this whole sewer plan, we have to do it though in, our zoning, we got to address the zoning issue in concert at the same time, you know, as we develop sewer, I mean, our zo, our whole zoning, you know, a lot, a lot of that in that growth area is actually zone agricultural and our zoning is pretty archaic and we got one ag zone, which is one, we're about, we're one of the few counties in the country that has that, particularly like in Maryland, you know, we don't have like an A1, A2, A3. We just got ag. Well, ag inside that growth zone is obviously very different than ag out in the far reaches of Nanico or, or Aquanico or, or Maradella or something.
But anyway, to your point, John.
But let me, Larry's got to make a statement. It's not going to be a discussion, it's just going to be a statement. At the last Tri-County Council Executive Meeting, which was the night of the hearing, the Bob's hearing on the budget, the last thing we mentioned was the Tri-County Council. With all three counties, we're going to formulate a committee and we're going to discuss water and sewer, so maybe that would be an option to think about.
Great idea.
Good.
So, to, to, to paraphrase Governor Hogan, my personal opinion is no new taxes. I, I don't see, I don't see where we're going to generate a lot of additional revenue through additional fees and/or taxation. To Bill's point, income taxes, we're at the highest rate we can exert, we're revenue capital and property taxes. If you raise your property tax a penny, we get about $620,000. If you raise our personal property mill rate, it's about $39,000 a penny and we could raise it, I think, about 17 cents right now. So, there's, there's some money on the table, but I don't think that the money, I think that money is going to pale in comparison to some of the costs that are coming at us and inflation that I believe is going to come at us. So, I, I, I came personally to the conclusion that we really have to get very, very serious about how we grow this county in a way that makes it attractive for people to locate here residentially and create businesses here and stay as competitive as, as we can with two very low tax environments that are within an easy commute.
So, the only thing we have really is that we're taxed at property taxes, but our, our rate on our income taxes, we're capped on the rate, but we're not capped on the growth. I mean, we could grow, we could grow income taxes.
And that's my point, yeah. That's my point, Joe.
It seems, it seems like we may be wrapping up, so I want, I'd like, we need to bring out one point here for the three people still watching on TV and our lone audience member who's, who's stuck with us. You know, you, you, you passed out something about the wealth per pupil and this is something that was brought up at our, at the public hearing and, and maybe I'll allow you to allow, you know, to expand on it, but, you know, there's a question brought up, if we didn't have the revenue cap, would we be, you know, such a considered, you know, our wealth per county, our wealth per pupil would be so low and get so much state aid? I think that has it a little bit backwards. It's, our wealth per pupil is low because we're a poor county and, and the state aid formulas are based on that wealth per pupil. So, even if we raised, we, we could double our tax rate, we'd still get the same state aid because we're a poor county. So, I mean, the state.
It's based on wealth.
Yeah, yeah, so as long as we're a poor county, the state's going to, you know, keep funding our school construction at a much higher rate than our Worcester County, keep giving a lot more money to us at per pupil revenue.
You're absolutely right.
Regardless of what our tax rate is, it's the wealth per pupil that really drives the, so, so, you know, I think there's maybe some, I mean, there's definitely some confusion out there about that. In fact, we're a poor county, we get the state aid, so.
You're right. The wealth per pupil, I think I gave you that.
Yeah, and I wanted to try to bring that out because I thought there'd been questions about that.
Just point out what the wealth per pupil in Worcester is versus NY Comico. The wealth per pupil, the wealth per pupil in Worcester County is $1,185,306. The wealth per pupil in Y Comico County is $290,096. That's staggering.
Yeah, it's not working out for Worcester, they're upset.
Yeah, well, I mean.
But that's just math. I mean, you can't do anything about it, it is what it is.
My wallet's math.
Yeah, but, 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 but Bill, it, it, it's, it also, it also, I think, clarifies when people make comparisons for what we spend per pupil versus what the wealthiest county in the state spends per pupil, I think that's a bit disingenuous. That's my point.
Right, and I don't think people, I, I mean, I think people get that, but the flip side of that is, you know, they don't get the aid that we get, it all balances out, you know, that that's the whole idea behind the, the formulas. But I don't disagree with your comment about, yeah, yeah, we can't do anything about, you know, we're not, we're not going to win this game in terms of, you know, property tax and, and even income taxes, you know, the income tax is, is rising for us, it's going to be rising, it's because the economy's going to be doing better everywhere else as well, but I wouldn't give up on, you know, we haven't talked about the other categories. And for example, I mean, you know, I think we do have to try to be creative in, you know, where, where is ways that we can create revenue that doesn't affect our, our general populace? And for example, I mean, and this, this is my second council meeting today, I spent all afternoon in Sussex County's meeting and, just for a business purpose, but had to do with solar. Solar's coming here. We're one of the few counties that hasn't gotten a major utility yet. It's in almost every single county on the shore now, and, and the counties have learned to adapt to that because they're making money off of it. Dorchester's changed legislation where that Caroline has, because they have solar plants that have come, solar farms that are a thousand acres, 800 acres, and they're utility companies. But when it first happened, was still ag land. So, all, all they were getting out of that was just ag tax, which they already, I mean, but they learned, well, they're taxing that now, that's something we need and, you know, just look at those counties, it's already out there, but it's going to come to us, you know, soon. And, you know, it's just a matter of time. I mean, you know, they're flocking to Delmarva, but I'm just mentioning as an example, but, you know, looking at these other, you know, there's some other categories that, and that doesn't affect our general populace, you know, it's not increasing our tax rates or anything.
I'm happy to look at that, though.
Maybe this is a good idea that we looked at this, but maybe the better idea is look at the county spending outlook instead of the county revenue.
That's a good.
It doesn't seem like we've got.
That's budget season.
It doesn't seem like we've got a lot of options as far as bringing money in.
I've been buried in that all day. Yeah, you can't cut yourself out of being poor, that's just a fact.
Yeah, what?
Can't cut yourself out of being.
You can't tax yourself into being rich either.
General, we appreciate it and we'll hold, honestly, I mean, we will hold a work session in the future, in the very near future on the Stormwater, wastewater, I mean, wastewater.
Last thing I'll get the budget and the CIP behind us and then we'll, we'll do the best we can to put the jets on that whole discussion. It's very important.
Discussions.
Appreciate it, thank you very much, General.
Thank you.
Entertaining motion to adjourn so we can go into closed session.
So, move if I can.
All is fair.
Weston's been sitting pretty excited about.